Great, good morning, everybody. I am pleased to call to order the April 7th, 2022 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Note the presence of all three Commissioners, and I'm going to ask Mr. Landauer to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we will start with opening comments today, of which I have several. First, the month of April is National Garden Month, which, of course, I guess this means we're going to get May flowers, given all these April showers. And during this month, we celebrate the great American tradition of gardening at home, at school, and in our community. Last year, our Office of Public Health launched the Norristown Sprouts Community Garden with funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Health's Preventive Health and Human Services Block grant. The garden is a partnership between our Office of Public Health and Eisenhower Science and Technology Leadership Academy. Through tomorrow, April the 8th, the Norristown Sprouts Community Garden is accepting applications from residents, schools, and organizations that wish to sign up for a free garden plot. The garden's purpose is to provide access to nutritious foods, a space for neighbors to connect, and to be an avenue to promote physical and mental health among Norristown residents. Plots are available for individuals, couples, families, or even organizations. Norristown Sprouts is open to individuals of all gardening skill levels and is inclusive of all languages, cultural backgrounds, physical abilities, and anything that makes our community members unique. We encourage everyone who's interested to apply before tomorrow's deadline, and you can apply at www.montcopa.org/communitygarden. And that's all one word, community garden. So montcopa.org/communitygarden. You can also contact our garden coordinator, Shanita Fields, by emailing norristounsprouts@montcopa.org, or you can call 267-433-8551. Next, I want to remind everyone that April is also National Minority Health Month. Now, we know that the COVID-19 pandemic has disproportionately affected communities of color, and that COVID-19 vaccination, including boosters, is one of the strongest tools that we have to prevent serious disease and death and bring an end to this pandemic. We encourage individuals and partner organizations to celebrate National Minority Health Month by sharing the message of encouraging all members of our community to stay up to date on their vaccines, which includes getting a booster. We're collaborating with our partners at the Montgomery County Immunization Coalition to support the hashtag #BoostYourCommunity social media campaign. The campaign includes social media messages and images in six languages to encourage members of diverse communities to get vaccinated and boosted against COVID-19. In addition, the Montgomery County Immunization Coalition is hosting two upcoming events for National Minority Health Month. On April the 28th, at 7:00 p.m., MCIC, Norristown NAACP, and the county are hosting a virtual event to connect our healthcare and community leaders to share the latest information on COVID-19 vaccines and answer any questions. Attendees can submit questions in advance or ask them live. You can register online at montcopa.org/vaccine. In addition, on April the 30th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., MCIC is partnering with the Norristown NAACP, Acclamo, Theater Horizon, and East Norriton Pharmacy to host a "Let's Fight COVID Together" community vaccination clinic at the Theater Horizon. No appointment is needed, and we encourage anyone who still needs a primary dose of vaccine or a booster to just walk up to this event. Lastly, I want to remind everyone that an important deadline is approaching. The county is actively engaged in plans to distribute our $161 million allocation of American Recovery Plan funds to implement projects and programs to help those most impacted by COVID-19. The county has created the Recovery Office to manage the process of gathering input, projects, and ideas from our community, and then getting these resources out to our community. Its charge is to provide information, resources, and opportunities related to our pandemic recovery funds to make sure that we equitably distribute this funding throughout Montgomery County. The Recovery Office is accepting proposals for projects and ideas now until April the 30th on our website at montcopa.org/recoveryoffice. That's all one word, montcopa.org/recoveryoffice. The county priorities for funding are to address community priorities such as affordable housing, mental health and behavioral healthcare services, childcare, public health emergency response, and digital access. We also want to specifically target and be informed by historically underserved community members. We want to provide a direct response to the impacts of the pandemic and make sure that our investments have the potential for long-term transformative impact. To date, we have undergone multiple community engagement events, including eight town hall events, with three of them conducted in Spanish, and we've conducted over 20 individual community partner meetings. We've also launched a community priority survey to inform our scoring rubric and have facilitated multiple community listening sessions. Recordings of these events are available on the Recovery Office website, and if you missed one, you can easily go there and watch one or two and get fully up to speed and informed about this opportunity. And any additional events that we have will also be posted on that website. Submissions for pandemic recovery funding fall into two main categories. You can submit a project, or you can submit simply an idea. A project is a fully developed program, service, or initiative for the county to fund, kind of a turnkey, ready-to-go idea, whereas an idea is just an idea. So you don't have to have it thought through, you don't have to have created a specific project, but if you have a really good idea for how you think the county should be focusing the expenditure of these funds, we hope that you will share that idea with us. For those of you who are considering submitting a project or an idea, technical assistance is available at no cost to anyone who would like a review of their proposal. So the technical assistance can include translation of proposals, helping to understand the requirements for submission, general support and technical help to answer any questions, explain the process, and help to navigate the application process, pre-submission review of the proposals, just to make sure everything is there as required, training and assistance on how to craft a clear, effective proposal, assistance with finding supporting data to boost your idea or your proposal. And we have specific support to applicants in Spanish, Korean, and Mandarin Chinese, and support for applicants who have disabilities. The submission portal for projects and ideas is open through the county's website, and again, that's montcopa.org/recoveryoffice. And we encourage everyone to get your submissions in by the deadline of April 30th. We will not be able to take any submissions after that. And with that, I'll turn over to Commissioner Land.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. The 2022 primary election will take place on Tuesday, May 17th, so I want to share some information about that and some key dates that are coming up. You must be registered to vote by Monday, May 2nd, 2022, if you want to vote in the primary. And Pennsylvania has closed primaries, so you must be registered either Republican or Democrat. Independents cannot vote in the primaries. The last day to request a mail-in or absentee ballot for the 2022 election is May 10th, 2022. And even if you applied last year to vote by mail, you're on the permanent list, you do need to apply each year. So you do need to apply again this year in order to vote by mail. And I also want to make an appeal for poll workers. We need poll workers. They're essential to our democracy to ensure that we can run a safe and smooth election, and we encourage people to apply. Judges of elections are paid $300 plus $50 for returning their materials on election night. All other poll workers are paid $225 for the day, or $115 for a half-day. And for everything I've discussed today, or more information, you can visit the Voter Services website at www.montcopa.org/voterservices, or you can contact Voter Services at 610-278-3280. Thank you.
Okay, great. All right. With that, we will move on to public comments on matters appearing on today's agenda. Mr. Stein, would you go ahead and read the...
Absolutely. All speakers, sign to the meeting sheet available in the back of the room, or virtually, should raise their hand, or as otherwise indicated by Ms. Francisco. All speakers must come to the podium if they are physically able. All speakers should identify themselves by name and municipality. All public comments must be relevant or germane to county business. Under the law, this means that all subject matters of comments must be limited to items or issues which are currently before the Commissioners for consideration, or which may come before the Commissioners for consideration at a future meeting. Whether matters germane to county business is a determination to be made by the county solicitor. On limit of two minutes, we'll be monitored, and county staff will respectfully request speakers to conclude their comments if the speaker goes beyond the time allotted. The Board is not required to respond to public comments during the course of the meeting, so the public is reminded this is not an opportunity for dialogues or questions and answers. The Board chair may direct appropriate county staff to follow up on any questions or additional comments after the meeting. Disruptive behavior, including, but not limited to, yelling from the seats, arguing whether matters germane to county business once the solicitor has made a determination of such,
noted and overruled, including but not limited to... I have an objection.
It is noted and overruled.
No, you can't. This is not a courtroom, Josh. You're not a judge. Okay, this is an open meeting.
And you are not allowed to filibuster. I'm going to have to ask security to come forward, please.
I'm not filibustering anything. I'm making an objection.
Please sit down.
Joshua.
You've made your...
You're not a judge.
You've registered your objection.
I know I didn't, because you didn't let me say what it was.
I'm going to have to ask security to come forward, and please, yeah.
Your rules are in violation of the sunshine law.
As I was saying, refusing to yield the floor once time has elapsed and being requested to sit down shall be grounds for removal from the meeting or meeting without further admonishment or warning. And as always, Commissioners, welcome written correspondence and feedback at commissioners@montcopa.org.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Okay, Ms. Francisco, do you want to start within the room or online?
We'll start within the room, and today we just have general public comments.
Okay. No one online has agenda comments?
No.
Okay. All right, then we will move on to general public comment. Thank you.
Okay. First, we have Ken Souter.
I'm here for the board of elections.
Okay, I'll wait. That's fine. That's fine. I'll make note. Okay. Joe Ferraro.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Joe Ferraro. I'm of Lower Providence, Pennsylvania. I'm not sure if this should be here or at another part in the meeting, but you... There's an anomaly inside the election, how we do our elections here. You have... There are three seats before me.
Sir, I'm sorry. Because there's an election board meeting today, it sounds like your comments would be more...
No, it's actually for this. I would appreciate if I could have the open space to state my case.
Certainly, but I will have to cut you off if it is...
You're running my time.
I understand, but if it is an election board matter, then it's not appropriate for this meeting.
It's my time. You have your time. What I was going to ask in a very positive way is that there are three of you, but we are only allowed two votes. I look at how this board has acted over the last number of years. I've looked at how, even in the room today, the attitude towards the public has been. What I'm requesting is that we have one vote per seat there, per voter. In other words, instead of me having two votes for three seats, me as a voter have three votes for three seats, and keep the minority in play, keep the minority seat in play, because I think it is a valid and crucial part of the system. Doing it this way, and only allowing two of a single party to go through, will create a situation where the parties actually have to get together during campaigning to say, "I will work with you." If you campaign with somebody, if you have a group of three people across party lines, we can start to drop the idea of partisanship at every turn. You mentioned earlier about there being a primary coming up. I think that's great, but I can't participate because I'm not... I'm exercising my First Amendment right not to be associated with certain groups, and because of that, my rights are now limited during the election process. I would love to be able to vote in a primary as someone who is not a member of the Democrats or Republicans. So I'm requesting...
Sorry.
Not... Excuse me.
I gave you additional time.
Well, I'm still... May I have more time, please?
No.
No.
But, Mr. Ferrer, let me just share with you that both of the issues that you're bringing up are not under the jurisdiction of the Board of Commissioners. They're in statute, in state statute, so your encouragement or your ideas would best be shared with your state representative and state senator, because it would actually require a change in county code.
I think it's with the county. I think it's with the county, how the county is set up.
Mr. Stein, do you want to clarify that?
That is definitely under state law.
Yeah. It's not our... It's not our board. Yeah. Okay, next?
Next, we have Pauline Braccio.
Good morning, Pauline Braccio, Townes and Township. On the Facebook page for Montgomery County, you are continuing to urge people to get the vaccine, and I don't think that the truth about the vaccine is being told by you, Valerie. I'll give you a quick example. In the U.K., 92% of the COVID deaths are people who were fully vaccinated. In Israel, it's 66% of the COVID deaths are people who were fully vaccinated. The vaccines have caused many injuries, lifelong, even death. It's... I have a report here from Merrill Nass, who is a doctor, and she has studied this. And I'm just going to get to the bottom line. So this is official data obtained over 30 million American adults and 48 million residents of England. Incontrovertibly, reveal that natural immunity was three times better at preventing cases than vaccination alone, even before Omicron. Natural immunity was somewhat better at preventing serious illness measured as hospitalizations than vaccinations alone. Boosters, a third shot, reduced the death rate in England of the vaccinated from Omicron, but the benefit was starting to drop off by January of this year. Natural immunity provided three times more protection against infection and therefore against transmission than did double vaccination during the Delta wave. After Omicron arrived, vaccine efficacy was even worse. Overall, England's unvaccinated population has a lower COVID death rate during the Omicron wave than the COVID death rate in its doubly vaccinated population. The vast majority of COVID deaths occur in those over 70. In this age group, the doubly vaccinated died from COVID at higher rates than during Omicron than the unvaccinated.
Ms. Braccio, your time is up.
I just would prefer you stop lying. Thank you.
Next. Next, we have Jim Daly.
Nice to see everyone. Jim Daly from Springfield Township. My public comments today are about the public comment period, so I hope they're germane to county business. The two-minute period, and I've been observing for a while now, I would ask that we move to at least three or four minutes. In Springfield Township, I was a commissioner for 12 years, actually with Jeff Harbison, the chair's husband, and we didn't have a time limit. And we had some pretty big land development cases came before us, and we were able to, without a limit, still allow people to get their voices out. You know, we'd hone it in when we had to, but we made it work, and I would just implore you to at least move this time of the three or four minutes. People come out from work, they take vacation days to be here at 10 o'clock in the morning on a Thursday, it's kind of tough, so, you know, that second or third or fourth minute, you may get an idea that you didn't think of. You don't know everything. So I just ask for that opportunity, a reasonable opportunity for folks to be heard. With respect to the last two meetings, the previous meeting where folks came here for school board issues with respect to their health and safety plans, I'm not getting into the substance about it, that they were sent here by their school boards. In fact, Springfield Township specifically said, "Hey, if you have a problem with the recommendations from the Office of Public Health, you need to go to the county." So folks from other municipalities I saw came here and did that, and there was a little bit of a chilling... I don't believe you were the solicitor at the time, somebody else was, saying it wasn't germane to county business, but when your school districts are sending you here, I would argue that it is germane to county business. And last month, I will give credit to the chair, you allowed much public comment within the two minutes, but on different subjects. And folks were here for different subjects, but particularly for the voter integrity issues. The audience gave a presentation, they gave comments. Nobody disparaged one Commissioner. I did the tape today. Nobody disparaged any Commissioners at that meeting. However, Mr. Gale decided to disparage the audience from that side, and I objected from the seat. I did object, because I think that should be addressed to the chair if he felt he was being disparaged in any way. He was not.
My time is up.
I'm sorry, but if I could just finish. To come back, this is county business, and when you're sitting up there, you're responsible to not disparage folks from the audience, especially if you're not disparaged from here, and I just thought it was a failure of leadership. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Kurt Stein.
Good morning. Good morning. Kurt Stein, Upper Salford Township. First off, I'd like to crack the record. When I was here last month, I'm not a political hack. I'm a Montgomery County citizen, Upper Salford Township, for 30 years, and concerned about the direction at times that the county is moving, and more specifically, it seems to be directly related to the voting process anymore. So, you know, I want to be up here to be transparent, and I think the county, I'm asking the county to be transparent also. When I spoke last week, I talked about bringing the ballots back to the precincts, and I was corrected by talking to Voter Services later in the week about the whole process. They stated that the ballots were taken away from the precinct due to Act 77, and the way Act 77 prolonged the mail-in voting process, they couldn't adequately get the ballots out to the precinct. I did not know that. I thought that was a process that was coming from the county level. In fact, it came from legislation, it came from the Secretary of State, it came from the governor, and a lot of different areas, I reckon, at this point. So I see that it's impossible, but what I think the Montgomery County citizens are looking for more than anything else is that transparency, and in some ways, education, which I was educated, you know, with Voter Services. Is there a way, and maybe this is the board election later, but to better communicate, where Vice Chair Mr. Lawrence kind of gave information on voter registration, mail-in ballots, and things like that, is there any way to educate voters that the things are going to be different this year? And how are they going to be different? I was also told by Voter Services that mail-in ballots will not be received after 8 o'clock on Election Day. And if that's true, I didn't know that either. I thought we were going...
Your time is up.
If there's a way that we could find a way to get some information out to the citizens of Montgomery County, I think we're going to have a much smoother election process and much informed election people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Barb Furman.
Good morning. Barb Furman, New Hanover Township. In 2009, my daughter was playing a sport in her public high school during swine flu outbreak. I remember clearly worrying because she developed a sore throat while with her teammates on a Friday night with a Saturday game. I was worried, I was very worried, that she could spread the infection to teammates with possible quarantine of the team. Swine flu was much more serious for children than COVID ever was. I am sure that you can empathize with mother's concern. At that point, there were no masks, no children's vaccinations, and yet the virus was much more serious for children. She did not have swine, she had tonsillitis, but I vividly remember that. Now, the last two years, children have been affected by this, that didn't really get seriously affected in real life, and yet their test scores are down emotionally, socially, they're destroyed.
Can I ask you to tie this into the Commissioner's business?
This was predicated on our health and safety plan, which was the Commissioner's health and safety plan that the school districts were using. And so I just want you to remember 2009 and our response back then versus our response today. I am a product of public education, and my children were, and this didn't have to be.
Next, we have Tom Moses.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank Tom Moses. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for not wearing masks.
And could you just state your municipality, please?
Thomas Moses.
Where you live?
Oh, skip back, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I have trouble hearing sometimes. That's why I'm thanking you for not wearing a mask. It's also important that you're not wearing a mask, because when comments are being made, we can see your facial expressions, and that means a lot to what, how we perceive your thinking about what's going on. So thank you for that, too. As far as the comment period time goes, I have a suggestion. When somebody's up here talking, the time runs out. You could simply, as Chair Dr. Kusht, say, "All those in favor of extending it, raise your hand, the people out here." And if enough people raise their hand, then I think you should let the person talk. I would just simply like to make a general... Our state founded on by William Penn on the principle that government can never tell you what to do, that ultimately, you're judged by your Creator. And I would like to read part of our Pennsylvania Constitution. Article 1, "The people have the most power in Pennsylvania." Article 1, Section 1, "Inherent rights of mankind. All men are born equally free and independent and have certain inherent and indefeasible rights, among which are those enjoying and defending life and liberty, of acquiring, possessing, and protecting property and reputation, and pursuing their own happiness." Article 2, "All power is inherent in the people. All and free governments are founded on their authority and instituted for their peace, safety, and happiness. For the advancement of these ends, they have at times an inalienable and indefeasible right to alter, reform, or abolish their government in such manner as they may think proper." And Article 3, "Religious freedom. All men have natural and indefeasible right to worship Almighty God according to the dictates of their own consciousness. No man can of right be compelled to attend, erect, or support any place of worship, or maintain any ministry against his consent. No human authority can in any case whatever interfere with the rights conscious, and no preference shall ever be given to any law or religious establishment's modes of worship." Thank you, sir.
Okay, we're going to move to those who are logged in via Zoom, so we have Peg Patton. You just need to unmute yourself.
My name is Peg Patton. I live in Perkyomanville, near Green Lane Park. Our family are big fans of the county's Parks and Trails Network, and especially of Green Lane Park, which I believe is one of Montgomery County's most valuable assets. For that reason, I wanted to bring to your attention a serious issue related to public disclosure and the allocation of county resources. Green Lane Park now has permanent commercial advertising by whole sponsors of a competition-level disc golf course that was built in 2020. The advertising... The advertising is displayed on vivid signs in the park's main day-use area, including high-traffic spots along the Perkyoman Trail. Whole sponsorships for a pro-level disc golf course in Green Lane Park were solicited and secured by park personnel six months before the first public meeting about the disc golf course. As a result, there is no public record of the solicitation. My second right-to-know request for this information remains unfulfilled. With whole sponsorship funding, this special interest group has made permanent alterations to conservation landscape property and natural heritage area core habitat. This was done without the permission of Montgomery County residents or their elected officials. I appreciate your attention to this matter, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Charles Serino. You can unmute yourself.
Good morning. My name's Charles Serino. I'm from Upper Moreland 62. I'm the judge of elections there. And this is regarding the relocation of our polling place from Upper Moreland High School to the YMCA.
Mrs. Serino, if I could just stop you, that is definitely an election board matter. This board can't vote on those issues, so your comments would need to be reserved for the election board meeting, which is immediately following this meeting, actually, following the salary board meeting.
Okay, I was told it was this meeting. I apologize.
Yeah, no, my apologies. I'm not sure, that's incorrect. It's the election board meeting later today.
Okay, next, we have Kim Henderson.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity. My name's Kim Henderson, East Norton, Precinct 24. Hi, everyone. At March 17th meeting, Liz Prevey from Montgomery County Republican Committee talked about the right-to-know information she received, including videos of over 100 people putting more than one ballot in the ballot boxes that are located throughout the county. I believe there's 11 of them. She released a press release that you can find on Around Ambler online. There was an older woman putting multiple ballots in a ballot box, and we believe it might have been Upper Dublin's library location. We, the people, want to know, has the Board of Commissioners reviewed the video footage of over 100 people stuffing more than, stuffing ballot boxes? If not, we want to know why. If so, did, why did, if so, how did you certify a fraudulent 2020 and 2021 election with this ballot stuffing happening?
Just so that you're aware, the commissioners do not certify the election. That is an election board matter.
Okay, I'll stand corrected on that. They do have oversight, and two of the commissioners are on the Board of Elections. So, I wanted to bring it here because the meeting, Liz brought it forward last week, or I'm sorry, on May 17th. And so, where she felt it was something that was relevant to this board, I do, too. And I do ask, and I'm going to send each one of you an email to this effect, too, because I'd like to know the answer. Did you, in fact, review the videos of the ballot stuffing? And if not, why not? Please do your job. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Joan Parsons.
Yes, good morning. Now that a pill is being promoted by Merck, Malinupiravir, for early treatment for COVID, I would like to know when you will also promote ivermectin and hydroxychloroquine, which are FDA-approved and also available on GoodRx and SingleCare. Now, I understand that ivermectin and hydroxychloroquine were not promoted in the beginning of this two years ago, but now, after two years, we do know that those two early treatment prescriptions can help, the same way Merck's experimental Malinupiravir pill is being promoted on TV every time you, a commercial comes, comes up. Now, I understand the time is up. Your time is up to, to people like us that vote people in. We're really tired of hearing that our time is up. We would like your time to be up, because it's not fair to give us two minutes. Two minutes is not enough time for us to get across what we would like to say out in public. It just seems that when we see the looks on your faces, that you are so bored with what we are saying. And it really is not fair, because we are the people, and we are the people that you must listen to. We are the people that vote. We are the people that, in this election, we hope is going to be fair and honest. We hope that there isn't going to be any shoving of extra ballots for any one candidate. And I would also like to say, the right to try any type of medicine that's FDA-approved or experimental is exactly what everyone has a right to, the right to try. Ivermectin works. I know it works, because I used it. And I would like to see the three of you start to talk about other ways and other right-to-try medicines out there, because there's a whole list of them. So, please, give us, give us the truth. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our public comment.
Thank you. We will move on to approval of the minutes. I will move to approve the March 17th, 2022 minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, it turns out April's a very popular month for designations. And so, next, we have National Library Week. And we've got Karen D'Angelo, the Executive Director and District Administrator, and Tracy Reed, District Consultant Librarian for Montgomery County here in Norristown. Good morning.
Good morning. I am Karen D'Angelo, and I am the Executive Director of Montgomery County Norristown Public Library. This is National Library Week, and thank you so much for inviting us. I'm also from Warriorsburg, if you need that. I want to thank you guys for everything that you've been doing for the library, for the new, four new board members, one of which is hopefully going to be approved today, who are working with us to renew and rejuvenate library services. Our main library is located right in the middle of Norristown, a couple blocks away. We walked over in the rain. And it really serves the community that it's in. And it's a 76-year-old, it's a 1976 building, and it looks like it. And so, I really appreciate the fact that you guys have been working with us on how to improve that. We're in the middle of our strategic planning process, and we are working with stakeholders and community members to get their feedback and your feedback on what should be done to make that library the shining star of the community that it really should be. And we're looking forward to working with the recovery office, and really thankful to you for putting it into the capital improvement plan to do a study of what that building needs. And I am going to turn this over to Tracy Reed, who is our District Consultant Librarian, and represents all of the libraries, public libraries in the county.
Good morning. Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you. Just to give some perspective on Montgomery County libraries, there are 20 libraries in Montgomery County and 35 brick-and-mortar locations. This is a county that loves its libraries and loves to read. And I thank you, and they thank you for your support. To give a little bit of overview, we have had, and I ran these numbers this morning, 2021, in the midst of the pandemic, we had over a million visitors. We had 1.58 million, 1.158 million visitors who checked out over 5 million items from those libraries this year, last year. We ran virtual and in-person 7,800 programs, which attracted 179,000 people to the libraries in Montgomery County. Keep in mind, this is both virtual and in-person, because libraries pivoted during the pandemic to serve people where they were at. We also have two bookmobiles, The Books Go Round, which services pre-K and Title I and Head Start programs and that type of thing. And we have The Words on Wheels, which services seniors and independent living and those types of places. Both of those are fully functional mobile branches to which people can come in, browse a collection, and check out items at that time. Libraries are important. Libraries are essential in many ways. I often say that we don't save lives, but we do save lives. We don't know who comes into our doors and what they need and what they walk away with. But it is the support of you and the support of our community members that makes all of our libraries in Montgomery County that popular and that well-used. So, thank you all very much. And thank you all very much for your support of libraries in National Library Week.
Thank you. Well, thanks to both of you and all of your colleagues across the county for the real leadership that you showed during the pandemic. You pivoted very quickly when circumstances changed, and provided just a critical conduit for accurate information for folks here in the community throughout the entire pandemic. And you have, for years, been a resource for people to be able to get online, who maybe couldn't do that from their own homes, and so many other ways that the library's part of our community and incredibly supportive of everyone in our community. So, I just want to thank you for that leadership, and hope everyone goes to visit their local library during this week.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for braving the weather to be here this spring.
Nice job walking.
Walking across. Those were some pretty amazing numbers, and very impressive. I renewed my library car about two weeks ago, so I'm back on Overdrive. That's what, that's what I use. But we appreciate your leadership during the pandemic, and we look forward to working with you into the future.
Karen and Tracy, it's nice to see both of you. Appreciate you being here today. Thanks for that update. I hope this week goes well with your celebrations and festivities, but the rest of the year as well. Thanks for what you do.
So, next, it is also National Public Health Week. And from our Office of Public Health, we have David Genova, Division Director of Health Promotions, and Julia Picchioni, Picchioni? I'm probably pronouncing that wrong, from our Public Health Intern. Good morning, David.
Good morning. Hello, everybody. I am David Genova. I'm the Division Director of Health Promotion with the Office of Community Information and Education. Thank you for having me today. This week is National Public Health Week. As we celebrate the 27th year of National Public Health Week, April 4th through the 10th, we want everyone to know they can make their communities healthier, healthier and safer for all. This year's theme is Public Health is Where You Are. We are celebrating the impact we have made where we live, work, learn, play, and pray, and recognize the way our communities have influenced our hard work to make Montgomery County healthier. In recognition of the hard work of our communities as we continue to work together to see the end of COVID-19 pandemic, as well as the improvement on the whole of public health, we dedicate National Public Health Week 2022 to you. This year, we called attention to the intersectionality of public health by advocating for and educating our communities about our most vulnerable populations. The daily themes focus on how public health issues are connected and have an influence on each other, and how learning more about their connections will allow us the greatest opportunity to find the best possible solution to become the healthiest county and nation. Public health is where you are. Celebrates what we know is true, the places where we are physically, mentally, and socially affect our health and our lives. We'll celebrate the power of prevention, advocate for healthy and fair policies, share strategies for increasing equity, and champion the role of public health systems. Join us in observing National Public Health Week 2022, and become part of the growing movement to create the healthiest nation. We're encouraging everyone, public health professionals, students, elected leaders, and the general public to step in and do what they can to make our county and our nation a more equitable, safe, healthy, and just place. We hope you'll join. I'd like to turn it over to Julia, our Public Health Intern, to provide us with details about the daily themes of National Public Health Week.
Good morning.
Good morning. Hi, I'm Julia Picchioni, and you did get my name correctly.
Lucky.
So, I will be talking to you guys about what I have done for National Public Health Week. Do I have permission? Yes, okay. I'm going to share my screen. Okay. Oops, sorry. All right. So, I have been interning with the Office of Community Information and Education since January. I'm a senior at West Chester University studying public health. And I had the pleasure of working with our two other interns on this project for National Public Health Week. All right. So, we are currently on day four of National Public Health Week. It started on the fourth and will end on the 10th. The American Public Health Association chose this year's theme as Public Health is Where You Are, as David mentioned. And there are daily themes listed below for each day of National Public Health Week. So, we have racism, public health workforce, community, World Health Day, accessibility, climate change, and mental wellness. So, for this, we have chosen to do a social media campaign. The department's digital content creator already does an amazing job at posting consistently and frequently, and making sure that all the posts are eye-catching, fun, educational, relatable to the community. And so, with keeping with the eye-catching theme, I came up with this idea to create multiple different posts that form one big photo, once they're all posted together. So, as you can see, this is what it would look like on our department's Instagram feed. So, it all comes together as one. And so, each of the individual posts, we've kept the words to a minimum, just because when you're scrolling through your newsfeed and see a long paragraph, typically, people will scroll right past. But having it short and sweet, people can get the idea in just one second. But for each individual post, we've included captions with a short statistic and fact for each of the themes. So, for the first one, with racism, we have that the black community sees 11 infant deaths per 1,000 deaths, which is two times the national average. The second theme is public health workforce. A diverse workforce helps identify and adds, or addresses structural bias in a workplace and healthcare systems. The third theme is community. Thirty-six percent of Americans report feeling lonely frequently or all the time. And there are many ways that the Montgomery County Health Department offers many resources and programs to keep you engaged in the community. The fourth day, today, is World Health Day. Happy World Health Day. And the theme is health is a human right. 260 million Americans spend over 25% of their household budgets on healthcare alone. And healthcare costs drive people, or drive more people into poverty every year. And it is everybody's responsibility to acknowledge and speak out for health as a human right. The fifth theme is accessibility. Thirty-seven percent of adults with disabilities are unable to afford or do not have access to primary care. The sixth theme is climate change. 135 million people in the United States live in areas with unhealthy air. And something that I found shocking was that Pennsylvania, our state, ranks number two in states with the worst air quality. And the final theme is mental wellness. One in five Americans will experience mental wellness. Depression can increase individuals' risk for physical and long-lasting health conditions, such as diabetes, heart disease, and stroke. And so, I would just like to conclude with a quote from the American Public Health Association, where they say, where we live impacts our community's health, and we can make our communities healthier, stronger, and safer. Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
I move to strike all that from the record, because it's all the S.
Well, David and Julia, thank you so very much. And we're so grateful to have you here interning, and for your wonderful, creative help. That's just terrific. And we hope that you will consider a career with us when you graduate, and actually move into your public health profession. So, thank you so much for that. And I just want to say again, and share my thanks to our Office of Public Health and everyone that works there. It has been an extraordinary couple of years. And in addition to taking on COVID and all the work with testing sites and vaccination sites and data analysis and communicating with the public, they didn't stop doing everything else that they do every single day, which is restaurant inspections and well-water testing, and making sure that our community garden is up and running this year, and our regular vaccine clinics, like for the flu and for immunizations for children getting ready to go to school. Like, none of that work missed a beat. None of that work missed a beat. And I just want to say how grateful I am to our public health professionals here in the county across our Commonwealth and our country. They play such a critical role in keeping all of our communities safe. So, thank you.
David and Julia, thank you for the report. Julia, thank you for all the work that you've been doing, and good luck with your studies at West Chester.
Thank you, and thank you for having me.
Great. Thanks, you guys. Take care. All right, it is also Distracted Driving Awareness Month, and we have Elizabeth Rahm from our Community Health Program Manager.
Good morning. Just give me a moment to share my screen. Good morning, everyone. I want to first thank the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners for the opportunity to speak today, and Kelly Co. Francisco for the invitation. My name is Elizabeth Rahm, and I am the Community Traffic Safety Program Manager for the Montgomery County Office of Public Health, here to speak to you today about Distracted Driving Awareness Month. Every year in April, we observe National Distracted Driving Awareness Month to educate drivers and passengers that safe driving means driving without distractions. Just Drive is a campaign designed to encourage drivers to reduce distractions and focus on the single task of driving. So, what is distracted driving? Distracted driving is any activity that could divert a person's attention away from the primary task of driving. There are four main types of distracted driving, including visual, where looking at something other than the road; auditory, hearing or listening to something not related to driving; manual, manipulating something other than the steering wheel; and finally, cognitive, thinking about something other than driving. Emotions and feelings can also play a role here. These are the top 10 driver distractions. Getting generally distracted or lost in thought, thinking about something else; cellphone use; an outside person, object, or event; passengers that might be laughing, talking, or singing; using or reaching for a device or another object in your vehicle; six, eating or drinking while driving; adjusting audio or climate controls; using devices or controls to operate the car, such as adjusting mirrors, your seatbelt, or using windows; moving objects in the car, such as pets or insects; and finally, smoking-related distractions. When distracted, drivers have significantly reduced reaction time and difficulty monitoring their surroundings, seeking and identifying potential hazards on the roads, responding to unexpected situations such as traffic, or seeing road signs and traffic signals. Cellphones are a very common distraction in today's driving world. Drivers do not see 50% of their driving environment when using a cellphone by texting, talking, using the GPS, scrolling through apps or social media, and choosing music playlists and other common cellphone behaviors, even when using a hands-free or Bluetooth device to talk. As I mentioned earlier, cognitive distractions take our mind off of driving, and this can be evident here when using a Bluetooth device. Did you know that sending or reading a text takes your eyes off of the road for an average of five seconds? At 55 miles per hour, that is like driving the entire length of a football field with your eyes closed. Here are PennDOT's top tips to avoid distracted driving. Turn off or silence phones and put them out of reach. Turning your phone on silent can help minimize that temptation to grab it when it dings or rings. Pull over safely to make calls or send texts. Set up your GPS prior to starting your trip. And also, set up your radio and air conditioning heat before driving. Limit conversations with passengers to avoid rowdiness. Do not eat or drink while operating your car. Pull over safely to do so or eat at the restaurant. If you are tired, pull over safely to rest or delay your trip. When making calls, ask your family or friends if they are driving so that you do not pose as a distraction to them. Be especially vigilant around commercial motor vehicles, including heavy trucks, and around motorcycles. Forty-one percent of all motorcycle crashes are due to drivers failing to see motorcycles. So, look twice and share the roads so that everyone can get to their destination safely. I want to talk briefly about our work in distracted driving awareness, education, and prevention. Through our traffic safety grant with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, we provide teen driver safety education in an effort to reduce reckless and distracted driving, which is the number-one killer of teens in America today. We currently administer the Impact Teen Drivers Program, which is an evidence-based program that seeks to engage, educate, and empower teens by encouraging smart decisions behind the wheel, ultimately creating a driving culture that is distraction-free in an effort to save lives. Through our program, we offer both in-person presentations and virtual modules. So far this year, we have educated over 500 students at Abington Senior High School and Happer-Horsham High School, sharing stories of real teens who have been affected by reckless and distracted driving, and providing strategies to reduce reckless and distracted driving. If you are interested in learning more about our Teen Driver Program, you can visit moncopa.org/teen driver, where you will also find our virtual modules. All Montgomery County teens are invited to participate. If you have any questions or are interested in our traffic safety programming, please feel free to reach out to me at erahm@moncopa.org, or visit penndot.p-a.gov/safety for more information about distracted driving. Thank you.
Elizabeth, thank you so much. We really appreciate the work that you're doing, and we know this is not easy. It is a bit of an uphill battle. So, it's great to see the work that's being done with teens to hopefully get people with good habits when they start to drive, which is really great. So, thank you very much. Lots of good information there.
Thank you for the tips. I shall incorporate some of them.
We will all try to incorporate them.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks. Take care. Okay, it is time for our 2022 County Transportation Program kickoff. Mr. Popeck. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. The Montgomery County Planning Commission is excited to kick off the fifth year here of our County Transportation Grant Program. Next slide. A brief agenda of what we're going to work through today. Since there's always somebody that hasn't heard of the County Transportation Program, we'll give a brief overview of what it is, what we've done with the first four years of the grant awards that have been authorized by the Commissioners, and what's important to know coming into year five. Next slide. So, what is the County Transportation Program? In a nutshell, it's a competitive program for our 62 municipalities to work on improving their own locally-owned transportation infrastructure. It is funded each year through the county's capital budget, using the revenues from the $5 vehicle registration fee at a level of $1 million. Next slide. Why do we need a program like this? Even though Montgomery County owns a substantial number of roads and bridges, which we'll see on the next slide, one-third of our municipalities contain no county-owned roads or bridges. However, what they do own totals over 2,700 miles of roadways, 330 bridges, over 1,150 traffic signals, and all of the money that is supposed to be coming back from the state to help pay for the maintenance and upkeep of this, each of those municipalities, the median payment only equals about $335,000 per year. So, there's always money demands from our various municipalities to keep all of our infrastructure working and in good shape for the public at large. On the next slide, you'll see our map of overall county-owned roads and bridges. It stretches, again, across a wide swath of most of the county. However, there are certain municipalities that don't have any county assets, and therefore, we want to use this program to try and spread the money around evenly, as you will see on our next slide as we discuss the goals of this overall program. Funding projects throughout the county, spreading out this revenue in an equitable fashion, increasing the overall transportation investment in our system, and of course, meeting the goals of our comprehensive plan, Monco 2040. On the next slide, we will discuss briefly the awards that we've had to date. So far, through the first four rounds in the first four years, we've awarded nearly $4 million in total grant awards to 37 different projects across 24 different municipalities. The types of projects that we've been able to fund include new bridges, traffic signal upgrades, pedestrian improvements, and congestion relief. On the next slide, a brief update on how the awards are going so far. Years one and two, the projects are largely wrapping up, just like with everything else over the last two years. There have been various construction delays and issues with procurement, but we're working to get all of the projects finished and completed and paid out from Montgomery County. The year three projects, those that were awarded in 2020, are largely underway, and the year four projects that were awarded last October, those contracts have been executed, and our municipalities are getting started working on the final design and construction of those. We have a couple of pictures on the next few slides of some of the completed projects. You see, most of the year one projects, as a reminder, were largely traffic signal-oriented. So, the two pictures on the left and center are from Warsester Township on Route 363 at Stump Hall Road and Route 363 at 73. And the picture on the right is from Witpane Township, Route 73, and Penland Blue Bell Pike, funding some of the traffic signal detection equipment and cameras to help move the traffic signals and adapt the traffic flows going through these particular intersections. On the next slide, we have some pictures from year two completed projects, one of which was a pedestrian signal crossing at Seventh Street and Main in Reutersford, and the other is the intersection of Flower Town Road and Joshua Road in White Marsh. You can see the larger concrete build-out and some intersection realignments. The traffic signals were replaced, and some pedestrian crosswalks were installed as well. Next slide. So, here's the information for our municipalities and various engineering firms to know about the year five program. Again, we have 1 million available to us through the county's capital budget. It will be open to municipal applicants only, though public-private partnerships are possible. The grant will fund construction only, as well at a maximum award of $500,000. The local match is 20% for the first $200,000 of county transportation funds that are committed, and it's not quite visible on the screen here, but it's 50/50 for anything above $200,000 up to that maximum award of $500,000. On the next slide, a brief overview of what is different this year. We have largely kept the program the same from year three and especially year four. We are clarifying the focus areas somewhat to make sure that we are trying to encourage applications that are helping to implement our Bike Monco Plan and/or local bike lanes. We're always looking for improvements to direct county assets, whether it's roads, bridges, or the infrastructure around them, and we're certainly looking for any innovative approaches that municipalities may have, or funding complete streets initiatives as well. There is also some further refinement and clarification in the guidebook about PennDOT's oversight. Since this funding comes from a state program in the first place, PennDOT is involved with the management and oversight of the program, and the documents that are needed for any of the bidding and procurement processes are listed this year more clearly in the guidebook themselves. PennDOT Municipal Services continues to work with our finance department and the Planning Commission to make sure that the funding is administered safely and distributed at the appropriate times. On the next slide, we have a overview of our calendar for this year. So, just this morning, we have posted the updated guidebook for year five. On the project's website, moncopa.org/countytransportationprogram, it is all one word, municipalities and engineering firms are encouraged to log on today and start looking at the information that is available. Our application period will be open from June 1st, so just after Memorial Day, through the month of June and the month of July. Will close on Friday, July 29th. During August and September, internal staff here at the county will review all of the applications and recommend awards, and we're hoping to have the Commissioners once again approve those awards in October. On the final slide here, you will see the new cover for our updated year five County Transportation Program Guidebook. Again, it is available today, as of right now, on our website, moncopa.org/countytransportationprogram. Thank you, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Popeck. We appreciate this great update, and I know this is an extremely popular program with our municipalities across the county, so we look forward to see what applications we get this year.
Thank you.
All right. We will move on to resolutions. We will begin, Mr. Hartman, with an authorization to award open space grant funds to Natural Lands Trust for acquisition of property in Southford Township. Good morning.
Good morning. I have a short PowerPoint, too. That's okay. Yes, good morning. Today, we're going to be seeking your authorization of a proposed open space fund grant award of $52,400 to Natural Lands, a land trust for its acquisition of a property in Southford Township. And if you look at this slide, you can see in the upper-left-hand portion of the county, a star with a circle around it. That's the approximate location of the site. Next slide, please. Specifically, Mildred L. Clemens owns a tract of real estate located adjacent to Houseman and Camp Green Lane roads in Southford Township, totaling approximately 7.3 acres in area. Parcel is situated within the Unami Creek Ridge Valley Creek Conservation Landscape per the 2007 Montgomery County Natural Areas Inventory Update, and it is located immediately adjacent to Natural Lands' 321-acre Full Shaw Craig Preserve. This acquisition will expand the Full Shaw Craig Preserve, which serves as the central keystone to the Ridge Valley Creek watershed, and contains miles of publicly accessible trails. The acquisition will complete a missing link to Full Shaw Craig's trail system, and the preserve is also ecologically significant with a number of sensitive plant communities. So, this slide is starting to zoom in on the site. You can see the parcel located inside the red circle. It's long and narrow. Next slide, please. And this is zooming in even more. Everything that you see, actually, Kelly, could you jump back one slide for me? Everything that you see in dark green here is the Full Shaw Craig Preserve. So, you can see it's a pretty large preserve that Natural Lands owns. Everything in light green is a conservation easement. So, you can see the proximity of the site to Full Shaw Craig. And the next slide, please. And again, zooming in, you can see in orange, that's the Clemens parcel, 7.3 acres in size. You can see its adjacency to the green polygons that represent the preserve itself. This parcel is undeveloped. As you can see, it's largely woodland and located with the RC, within the RC Rural Conservation District, which has a maximum two-acre lot size. And since 1987, Montgomery County has financially supported more than 10 of the Full Shaw Craig acquisitions that built the preserve as we know it today. Next slide, please. Natural Lands has a signed agreement of sale with the property owner, and the property has been appraised at $110,000. Natural Lands just submitted an application to PA DCNR's 2022 C2P2 Grant Program for $60,000 to assist in acquiring the parcel. And if the DCNR grant is awarded, the $52,400 requested from the County Open Space Fund, along with a $20,000 funding award from Southford Township, would satisfy DCNR's required one-to-one match. The County Open Space Board met on March 31st and unanimously recommended that the Board of Commissioners award the $52,400 open space fund grant to Natural Lands, of course, contingent upon their successful acquisition of the parcel and ultimately, the receipt of the C2P2 grant award.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby authorize an open space grant of $52,400 to Natural Lands for the purchase of the Clemens property as described by Mr. Bill Hartman and as noted in the attached Exhibit A. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Question? Okay. Looks like a great opportunity. And again, just to be clear, our funds will not leave the county unless DCNR approves the grant request, correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, hearing no additional comments, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thanks. Next, we have an authorization to transfer ownership of Fern Avenue Bridge to the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. Mr. Bonner.
Good morning, Commissioners. Before this morning is a resolution, as you said, transferring ownership of Bridge 96, Fern Avenue, over Skipback Creek, within the footprint of Evansburg State Park. This resolution finalizes the transfer of this bridge asset from the county to the State Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, also known as DCNR. After the full restoration recently completed by Montgomery County of the bridge, based on a mutual agreement that's been in effect for several years between the county and the state, this resolution finalizes that arrangement and allows us to formally transfer ownership and future maintenance responsibility to DCNR.
Thank you. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to execute the necessary documents to transfer ownership of the Fern Avenue Bridge in Evansburg State Park from Montgomery County to the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thanks. Next, Mr. Stein, an authorization to grant a sanitary sewer easement to Whitpain Township.
Yes, thank you. As you are aware, the county owns the property upon which the Montgomery County Community College sits, in Whitpain Township. The township has requested the transfer of a sanitary sewer easement to the township. There is actually an existing sanitary sewer line there that was not marked off properly. This would correct this and add additional sanitary sewer lines. It covers about 5.5 acres of land. The community college has no issues with this and requested that we sign off on this. And this has been approved by Whitpain Township.
Okay, thank you. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to execute the necessary documents to grant a sanitary sewer easement to Whitpain Township. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, next, we have a commissioner's appointment to the Pennsylvania Convention Center Board. I will move that pursuant to the Pennsylvania Convention Center Authority Act, the commissioners hereby appoint myself, Valerie Arkush, Chair of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners, to the Pennsylvania Convention Center Authority to serve the unexpired term of Mr. David Nassiter that is set to expire on December 31st, 2023. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment?
Just like to make a comment that Mr. Nassiter has actually become Chair of the Board there, so I want to give him congratulations on that, which gives him... Thank you for your service.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, his becoming Chair opens up another Montgomery County slot on the board, so... All right, hearing none additional comments, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes?
I'm a negative vote.
Okay, motion carries, two to one. Next, we have appointments to the Board of Directors of Montgomery County Norristown Public Library. I will move that Chantel Silverio be appointed to the Board of Directors of Montgomery County Norristown Public Library for a term that begins immediately and expires on December 31st, 2024, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, we have commissioners' appointments to the Montgomery County Valley Forge Tourism and Convention Board. I will move that Dedrin Bailey and Howard Brown be appointed to the Valley Forge Tourism and Convention Board for terms to begin immediately and to expire on April 7th, 2026, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries.
Chair, Madam Chair, we need number five.
Oh, did I miss five? Oh, I did. Thank you, Mr. Stein. All right. And commissioners' appointment to... I'm sorry, commissioners' appointment and reappointment to the Montgomery County Office of Senior Services Advisory Council. I will move that Kathy Evellith be appointed and Betty White be reappointed to the Montgomery County Aging and Adult Services Advisory Council for a term that begins immediately and expires on December 31st, 2024, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Any negative votes?
I'm a negative vote.
Okay, motion carries, two to one. Great. We will move on to personnel. Ms. Perdue.
Good morning. Good morning, commissioners. You should have in front of you a final copy of the Commissioner's Department's personnel list. It is a seven-page document dated Wednesday, April 6th, 2022, with a timestamp of 11:35 a.m. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for consideration.
Thank you. I will move to approve the April 7th, 2022 personnel presentation as given by Director of Human Resources, Ms. Donna Perdue, to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. And before you sit down, I just want to publicly thank you for the great job yesterday with the employee recruitment fair. Commissioner Lawrence and I were both there for a while in the afternoon, and it looked like a lot of people came. What was the final count? Do you have...
We are still counting.
Good.
But we have seen an uptick in applications. So I feel like it was a great success with a tremendous amount of support from all over the county, communications, my group in HR, and workforce development, and everyone just did such a great job. So thank you.
Good, well, we're excited to have new employees and hopefully we'll get a lot of our open positions filled as a result of this. Thank you, and it was a lot of work to get that done. All right, Ms. O'Malley, advertisements of a bid and RFPs.
Yes. There is a bid on behalf of assets and infrastructure for floating docks. The successful responder will provide replacement floating docks for Green Lane Park. Contract will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Two, an RFP on behalf of the Communications Office for a branding proposal. The successful responder will advance Montgomery County's print and digital presence to support a consistent visual identity across county departments and contribute to improved communications with the public. Contract will be awarded to the highest-rated responder. Three, an RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for a consultant. The successful responder will provide your way home continual of care, emergency food and shelter program consulting for the Office of Housing and Community Development. Contract will be awarded to the highest-rated responder. Four, an RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for legal services. The successful responder will provide legal services for families and individuals experiencing or at imminent risk for homelessness in Montgomery County. Contract will be awarded to the highest-rated responder. Five, RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for adult daycare providers. The successful responders will provide an interactive, safe, and supervised environment for older adults. Adult daycares offer a community-based alternative to institutionalization and provide a reliable source of support and respite for caregivers. Contracts will be awarded to the highest-rated responders. Six, an RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for an information service provider. The successful responder will provide information assistance and outreach services available from the Montgomery County Office of Senior Services and other service providers for Montgomery County residents age 60 and older. Contract will be awarded to the highest-rated responder. Seven, RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for training services. The successful responders will provide certified peer specialist trainings for Montgomery County residents experiencing mental health challenges. Contracts will be awarded to the highest-rated responders. Eight, RFP on behalf of juvenile probation for a specialized evaluator. The successful responder will provide trauma-informed psychiatric evaluations and psychological evaluations for Montgomery County children and adolescents that are involved with the juvenile probation department. Contract will be awarded to the highest-rated responder. All RFPs and bids are available on the county's purchasing website at www.moncopa.org/purchasing.
Thank you, Ms. O'Malley. I will move to approve the preceding requests for the advertisement of a bid and RFPs, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, we have awards of contract for the county.
One, contract award, adult probation and juvenile probation vehicles. Whitmore Ford of Mountjoy, PA, $252,000. Contract provides for seven 2022 Ford Explorers with front and rear partitions. Vehicles are available through a PA CoStarz contract. Two, contract award, assets and infrastructure inspection services. Penone Associates Incorporated of Philadelphia, PA, $284,212.50. Contract provides construction inspection services for County Bridge Number 99, Perqian Trail Bridge over Perqian Creek in Marlborough and Upper Frederick Townships. RFP 2203 was viewed by 18 firms with six responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest-rated responder. Three, contract award, assets and infrastructure construction inspection services. Nictish Kunkle and Associates of Allentown, PA, $99,846.29. Contract provides full-time onsite construction oversight and inspection during the replacement of County Bridge Number Six, located on Mill Creek Road over Mill Creek in Lower Marion Township. RFP 2202 was viewed by 26 firms with six responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest-rated responder. Four, contract award, assets and infrastructure construction inspection services. Penone Associates Incorporated of Philadelphia, PA, $74,979.40. Contract provides full-time onsite construction oversight and inspection during rehabilitation of County Bridge Number 101, located on Old Gravel Pike over Swamp Creek in Lower Frederick Township. RFP 2210 was viewed by 18 firms with six responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest-rated responder. Five, contract award, assets and infrastructure fencing. Pro Max Fence Systems LLC of Redding, PA, $147,771. Contract provides fencing, protective barriers required along the Schuylkill River Trail in Norristown. Specification 6461 was viewed by 11 providers with two responses received. Contract is awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Six, contract award, assets and infrastructure dredging services. James R. Kenny Excavating and Paving Incorporated of Collegeville, PA, $1,890,075. Contract provides for dredging of the Ford Bay to the Schuylkill Canal just north of Lock 60 in Upper Providence Township and stabilizing the banks of the tributary to the canal. Specification 6472 was viewed by 30 providers with three responses received. Contract is awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Seven, contract award, assets and infrastructure equipment. PSX Incorporated of Philadelphia, PA, $273,979.29. Contract provides for the equipment and installation of parking garage access and controls equipment in the One Montgomery Plaza and Cherry Street garages. Equipment and installation services are available through a PA CoStarz contract. Eight, contract award, assets and infrastructure fuel. Wex Incorporated of Portland, Maine, $350,000. Contract provides estimated credit card fuel purchases for county-owned vehicles for the 2022 term. Fuel is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Nine, contract award, assets and infrastructure construction reimbursement, Upper Marion Transportation Authority of King of Prussia, PA, $47,518.27. Contract provides reimbursement costs to Upper Marion Transportation Authority for the replacement of Church Road Bridge in Upper Marion Township. Ten, contract award, Health and Human Services Training Services. NATEI Incorporated of Mine Hill, New Jersey, $25,500. Contract provides an accredited lead abatement training provider to conduct a training course for program participants to become certified in assessing homes located in Lansdale and Pottstown boroughs. RFP 2212 was viewed by 10 providers with three responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest-rated provider. Eleven, contract award, Health and Human Services Consultants. Triad Associates of Vineland, New Jersey, $192,760. Contract provides a technical assistance consultant for federal, state, and county community development programs. RFP 2219 was viewed by 28 providers with two responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest-rated responder. Contract is for a period of 29 months with one optional annual renewal term. Twelve, contract award, Human Resources Recruitment Services. Circa of Milwaukee, Wisconsin, $32,985. Contract provides online employee recruitment services. Circa's technology will automatically pull postings from the county's job board and push all county posted positions to over 600 diversity-based job sites. Contract is for a period of three years. Service platform is proprietary. Thirteen, contract award, Human Resources Employment Search Services, multiple providers. Contract provides professional search firms to provide recruitment services in order to expedite the hiring process for executive and professional-level, full-time, permanent position vacancies. RFP 2217 was viewed by 58 firms with 10 responses received. Contracts are awarded to the highest-rated responders. Contract is for a period of five years. Awarded firms, Recruiting Seuss International of Katy, Texas, the Act One Group Incorporated of Terrence, California, InstaServe LLC of Waco, Texas, Aegis Endeavor LLC of Grand Moray, Michigan, and Cogent Infotech Corporation of Pittsburgh, PA. Fourteen, contract award, Information and Technology Solutions Software. OpenSense Incorporated of San Francisco, California, $60,000. Contract provides for email standardization and e-stationery software. Contract is for a period of three years. Software is proprietary. Fifteen, contract award, Information and Technology Solutions Software. SHI International Corporation of Somerset, New Jersey, $30,672.22. Contract provides know-before network security software. Software is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Sixteen, contract award, Information and Technology Solutions, Licensing and Support. CDW Government of Vernon Hill, Illinois, $72,539.55. Contract provides election network DNA software subscriptions and Cisco SmartNet hardware support services. Services are available through a PA CoStarz contract. Seventeen, contract award, juvenile probation equipment. Whitmer Public Safety Group of Coatesville, PA, $28,658.60. Contract provides 34 ballistic vests for use by juvenile probation officers and supervisors. Equipment is available through a PA state contract. Eighteen, contract award, public safety equipment. Equal Power and Equipment Corporation of Montgomeryville, PA, $153,890.54. Contract provides a replacement backhoe loader for grounds maintenance at the Emergency Operating Center and Correctional Facility campus. Equipment is available through a PA state contract. Nineteen, contract amendment, Information and Technology Solutions Fiber Connectivity, Crown Castle Fiber of Warrington, PA, $270,063.81. Original contract provided support and maintenance for the county's dark fiber connectivity and ISP services as per RFP 1416. Amendment provides for the code-termining of contract expirations through July 2022. Twenty, contract amendment, finance. Widow Brian's, Washington, D.C., no cost. Original contract provided emergency management consultation and advisory services for federal cost recovery reimbursement relating to the COVID-19 emergency. Amendment provides a no-cost time extension of the contract through 8/31/2022 for final closeout and audit support. Twenty-one, contract amendment, assets and infrastructure engineering services. Gannett Fleming of Audubon, PA, $33,556.12. Original contract provided engineering services for the replacement of County Bridge Number 146, Burgies Mill Road over the east branch of Perqian Creek in Lower Southford Township. Amendment provides supplemental environmental and engineering services due to the additional work required as part of the federal historic mitigations process. Twenty-two, contract amendment, Planning Commission, supplemental reimbursement agreement, $1,953,600. Contract is between PennDOT and Montgomery County to provide funding for the agreement reimbursement according to state aid parameters for 80% of project cost toward the Ridge Pike Bridge over the Turnpike. Contract also provides a funding agreement reimbursement to the county according to federal and state aid parameters for 95% of project cost for Bridge Zero. Supplemental agreement adds funding to the base agreement for final design costs along the project. Twenty-three, contract amendment, Planning Commission, Engineering. Traffic planning and design of Pottstown, PA, $2,599,298.92. Original contract provided design services for the Ridge Pike improvement project from School Road to Belvoir Road in Plymouth Township. Amendment provides for anticipated final design and construction services. Twenty-four, contract amendment, Planning Commission, Engineering. Penone Associates of Philadelphia, PA, $358,385.37. Original contract provided engineering services for the construction of Ridge Pike Section B. Amendment provides for anticipated construction service costs during construction. Twenty-five, contract amendment, purchasing, software. Bonfire Interacted Limited of Kitchener, Ontario, $19,450. Original contract provided the electronic solicitation, bidding, and evaluation platform. Amendment provides one additional license for the remainder of the five-year contract term. Twenty-six, contract amendment, public safety truck. GLSAer Peterbilt of Conshohocken, PA, $3,411.78. Original contract provided a 28-foot box truck for public safety. Amendment is due to increased raw material costs from the vehicle manufacturer. Twenty-seven, there are three contract renewals and seven amendments for Health and Human Services. Providers and services are listed at the end of the agenda and in the back of the room.
Thank you, Ms. O'Malley. I hope you have a drink.
Yes.
I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comments? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, we will have awards of contract under emergency procurement for Hurricane Ida.
One, contract award for assets and infrastructure equipment. Williams Scotsman Incorporated of Baltimore, Maryland, $60,000. Contract provides delivery, setup, and estimated rental fees for a mobile office unit located at Lower Perqian Valley Park. The mobile office unit is necessary due to the destruction of the maintenance building which occurred during Hurricane Ida. Two, contract award, assets and infrastructure engineering. Alloy Five LLC of Bethlehem, PA, $66,125. Contract provides for design and engineering of a maintenance building to be constructed at Lower Perqian Valley Park to replace buildings destroyed during Hurricane Ida flooding. RFP 2222 was viewed by 60 firms with five responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest-rated responder.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, awards of contract for the Southeast Pennsylvania Regional Task Force.
Yes, there's one contract award. Video Wall, CDW Government of Vernon Hills... Yes, there's one contract award, Video Wall, CDW Government of Vernon Hills, Illinois, four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars. Contract provides a video wall for the Philadelphia Office of Emergency Management's Emergency Communications Center. Hardware and software is available through a Sourcewell cooperative contract. Two, contract renewal, maintenance, and support, Cellex ES Incorporated, LSEG ALPR ANPR Solutions of Greensboro, North Carolina, forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents. Contract provides an automatic license plate reader, maintenance, and support agreement for the regional counties. Equipment is proprietary to the vendor. Three, contract award equipment, Cellex ES Incorporated, LSEG ALPR ANPR Solutions of Greensboro, North Carolina, thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars. Contract provides automatic license plate readers for the regional counties. Equipment is proprietary.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract on behalf of the Southeast Pennsylvania Regional Task Force as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. O'Malley. Any closing commissioner comments? No? Okay. Then I will announce that the next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held April twenty-first, 2022, and that we have an election board meeting immediately following the Salary Board meeting, which comes next. And I will take the motion to adjourn the April seventh, 2022, meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Hearing none, move to a vote. Any negative votes? Meeting is adjourned. I'll invite Mr. Landauer, who is representing the Controller's Office this morning, to the dearest, and we'll begin Salary Board. Ms. Fardeau. Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have any public comment for Salary Board?
We do not. Not for Salary Board.
Okay, all right.
Good morning, members of Salary Board. You should have in front of you the fine-honed copy of the Salary Board list. It is an eight-page document dated Wednesday, April sixth, 2022, with a timestamp of eleven thirty-five AM. Of note, we have one retiree, Kathy Benton, from the Board of Assessment after three years. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for Salary Board consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Fardeau. Is there a motion to approve the April seventh, 2022 Salary Board presentation as given by the Director of Human Resources, Ms. Donna Fardeau, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Landauer. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? All right. Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn the April seventh, 2022, meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board?
So moved.
Moved and seconded by Commissioner Lawrence and Mr. Landauer. Any comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Any negative votes? Hearing none, Salary Board is adjourned, and we will move to Election Board.
We have Judge Wall.
Judge Wall. She's counting, I saw her. Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay.
Okay, I am going to call to order the April seventh, 2022, Election Board meeting. We'll start with Election Board comments. I'd like to welcome the Honorable Judge Kelly Wall from the Common Police Court, who will be joining Election Board. Are there any other Election Board comments? Okay, well, now I'll take public comments on agenda items, limited to two minutes, and the same rules apply as for the Commissioners meeting. Do we have any public comment? Yes.
Yes, we do. We'll begin with those in the room. First, we have Ken Sauter.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your time. Still concerned about the elections, and obviously something very serious to our republic. And I'd like to say my name is Ken Sauter. I'm from North Wales, Pennsylvania. So is this a, I know you're allowed to ask questions, but I will show the audience listening, wondering if this is a violation of elections. This is what you call ballot harvesting. This is somebody who is stuffing, it looks like, who knows, maybe twenty, thirty ballots into one drop box. Clearly a violation of our election laws, doesn't do much to engender confidence in this particular body and our board unless they would prosecute this as a election crime. Let me remind you what Mr. Lawrence had said back in 2020, as he was seeking to counter the false narrative that our election would be rigged. And he was on an interview with KYW News Radio, and I quote, "Ken Lawrence, County Commissioner and Chair of the Board of Elections, said voters should start getting their requested mail-in ballots in the coming days, and that they found no evidence of any interference or fraud." Fraud. This is fraud. Certainly, if we did, we would report that, and the people involved would be prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law. Did you not say that, sir? This is evidence of fraud, clear, as you can possibly see. Harvesting ballots in Pennsylvania is illegal, carries with it one year in prison and a thousand-dollar fine. You know, people see this, and they just cringe. They're looking to you to uphold the law of the land, which you have sworn that you would do.
My apologies, sir. Your time is up.
One verse, I'm going to quote Proverbs twenty-nine-two. "When the righteous are in authority, the people rejoice; but when the wicked bear rule, the people mourn." The people are mourning. Thank you.
Next, we have Joe Ferraro.
He left.
Okay, next, we have, excuse me, I can't read the writing, Tom Moses.
Thank you. Tom Moses, Skipback Township. First of all, I'd like to cite, currently, Act Seventy-Seven has been found to be unconstitutional. However, since Attorney General Shapiro sued on behalf of Governor Wolf and the Democratic Party, there's a current stay on there. But it is, it has been found to be unconstitutional, and the county, I believe, is not bound to follow the mail-in voting, which was a fraud to begin with because of-
You're absolutely incorrect there. You're absolutely incorrect.
Excuse me, it's my time.
We are bound by state law. We are bound by state law. There is a stay. The county does not have the right to say that mail-in-
You are, you are bound by your oath to uphold the Constitution, sir.
Right. That's correct. And it, and it-
Okay.
And it has not been declared unconstitutional-
The reason why-
Until the Supreme Court makes the determination of-
Please put my time on hold. The reason why, it was the county commissioner who sued because he could not certify the election without violating his constitutional duty. Your power comes from the Constitution, not by an election. Your election gives you the privilege to serve the position, but the power of your office comes from this Constitution. Now, I'm not here to discuss whether we got the vote on Act Seventy-Seven or not, but I'm here to discuss something else more important than that, a bigger reason why it's unconstitutional. Please put another minute on my time, please. May I?
No. You're, he stopped the time. You have the remaining time. You're not getting another minute.
Article seven, Pennsylvania Constitution, Section Four, Method of Elections, Secrecy in Voting. "All elections by citizens shall be by ballot or by such other method as may be prescribed by law, provided the secrecy in voting be preserved." Now, none other than our dearest Hillary Clinton-
Sir, your time is up.
I have more time. He spoke half my time. I will finish briefly. Hillary Clinton stated, after she lost the election to Donald Trump, she stated-
I'm not that situated to come forward.
That wives were told how to vote for their husbands. You cannot guarantee who's filling out a mail-in vote. You cannot guarantee how to fill in a mail-in vote. Thank you.
Next, we have Barb Furman.
Barb Furman, New Hanover Township. I am a judge of elections in my township, and am committed to the guarantee of a free and fair election, with the same rules for all registered voters, whether voting in person or by mail. I seek to understand the chain of custody of all mail-in ballots, the verification of signatures, the assurance of how the process works of collection and verifying when the last set of ballots are collected from drop boxes. What is the process at the Vote Counting Center? It is easy to understand how mail-in ballots can be counted at their local precinct, with local neighbors working together to count votes, but what are the safeguards in mass collection count and counting and last-minute votes? My precinct has over three thousand registered voters. I represent all of these people, and, and am committed to full transparency. That is a rather large precinct. Even the machines, how does one know how their vote was cast once they scan it into the machine? This county needs to be much more transparent on many facets of integrity of our voting systems. You, all three, plus all Commissioners, are liable for any and all lapses in process and counting. If there were, in fact, more votes than registered voters cast, that constitutes fraud. If you approve machines that are, in fact, hooked to the Internet, you are responsible. We, the people, are watching. We are involved. We are doing our research on all of the county's departments. No more can taxpayer money be blindly spent. Thank you.
Ms. Furman, I want to thank you for being a judge of elections. I want to assure you that our machines are not connected to the Internet, and I would invite you to speak with Dory Sawyer, who's our Director of Voter Services, who can give you the information you want on what the process is for mail-in ballots. But thank you for being a judge of elections.
Next, we have a few folks on Zoom. So Kim Henderson, you can unmute yourself.
Kelly, I think we have one more in the room.
Oh. Oh, I sound a little bit- Oh, that's- You're very good. I'm proud.
Sorry. Go ahead. Kim, we'll come back to you.
Hello, again. Hello, Your Honor, how are you?
How are you?
Just a quick question. Well, I have a question about the number, I guess, letter E, the process for which there'll be a replacement for Mr. Gale, and I guess, I know I can't go back and forth with a question and answer, but maybe when the motion comes up, can you explain to the folks what exactly a sitting Commissioner who is running for another office can and can't do with respect to being involved in the voting process? Are they allowed to go into voter services at all? If you could just lay that out during the motion, I'd just appreciate that. Thank you.
Did we have anyone else in the room? Okay, we'll go to those logged in by Zoom. Kim Henderson, you can unmute yourself. Okay, Kim, I don't see you unmuting here, so we're going to come back to you. We will go to Charles Sereno. You'll just have to unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you for taking this time. My name's Charles Sereno. I'm Upper Moreland six-dash-two Judge of Election. I've been the Judge of Election for over twenty years. We have voted in the Upper Moreland High School for as long as I've lived in the, in the, in Upper Moreland, which is over thirty-five years, and the election services is recommending that they relocate our polling location to the YMCA, which is around the corner from where we're at, so it's not, not a travel problem, but there's tremendous issues with that location. There's the only room that they have that's big enough to house Upper Moreland six-one and six-two is the gymnasium. They're only willing to give us half of the gymnasium, and the other half will still be active for the members to use. They're not shutting the facility down for the day like a high school does, and there's going to be a lot of noise, there's going to be a lot of distractions. The gym's located in the back of the building, so you have to kind of walk through the whole building to get to it. It, it's just not a very conducive location for two thousand-plus people in six-one and six-two to come vote, and we have that kind of turnout on a national election kind of day. It's, it's a real concern for the, the voting people to, to continue down this path, and I urge you to not vote for this now, and let us figure out a way to fix this problem on our own or with, you know, with working with voter services, and, and not do this, you know, just because it seems like a good idea. Thank you.
Next, we will go to, back to Kim Henderson. Are you able to unmute yourself now? Okay, Kim, we can't hear you if you're talking. We'll go to-
Wait, 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 I'm here, I'm here, I'm here.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
It wouldn't let me unmute. I was like, wait a minute.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, hi, Kim Henderson, East Norton two-four precinct. We, the people, have questions, statements, and requests about the ballot boxes. Even MSN, like Channel sixty-nine Berks News, is now talking about voter fraud related to mail-in ballots, which was also a source of, I believe, four percent adjudication. In a county of sixty-three municipalities and four hundred and four precincts, why were there only eleven drop boxes? Why do they get placed in their chosen locations? What kind of security and chain of custody happens with these boxes? Apparently, the boxes have some kind of video recordings, perhaps for security, but then who reviews them? When I vote in person, I sign the voting book, and I get one vote. I cannot vote for my husband or my kids who might be running late. I can only vote for myself. I checked the county site last night, and as of yet, the locations have not been decided. According to Jonathan Marks, Deputy Secretary, Secretary of Elections and Commissions, PA Department of State, said yesterday at the House State Senate, State Government Committee Public Hearing, that the state gives no guidance, nor does the statute. He said it goes to the county about the ballot boxes. Since Act Seventy-Seven gives ample time to get mail-ins and absentees in, why are we using these drop boxes? We, the people, recommend the deadline to request a mail-in box, a ballot, at least two weeks ahead of time, not seven days. We, the people, demand to cease utilizing drop boxes based on lack of security, lack of chain of custody, and possible discrimination that the boxes are not located in every township and in every precinct. Lastly, I was corrected in the Commissions meeting about the Board of Elections certifying the election. At the time of 2020, Joe Gale was on the Board of Elections as well, and now I understand because he's on the ballot that now Judge Wall is here, and Judge, welcome. Just wanted to state that. Thank you.
Next, we will go to Kenneth Kristovich. You can now unmute.
Good morning, this is Ken Kristovich.
Good morning.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. I have been the elected Judge of Elections in the East Norton one-four for more than a decade now, and I called this morning to express my full support for the testimony and evidence presented by Alyssa DeSprey-Havy, who is the Chairman of the Montgomery County Republican Commission who appeared before you, or Committee, who appeared before you recently. In the 2020 election, eighty-eight percent of the registered voters in my precinct filed ballots. A large percentage, I think about, let's see, sixty percent appeared in person, forty percent sent in Act Seventy-Seven, no excuse, mail-in ballots. I was denied, after several requests, I was denied the opportunity as the elected Judge of East Norton one-four, I was denied the opportunity to, to tabulate the ballots. I didn't see any signatures, comparisons, books, et cetera, and so forth, and various excuses were made to me. So the results of that particular election presented statistical anomalies that defied scientific explanation. I mean, the, it, it just, statistical anomalies. I mean, the, it just, statistical anomalies, okay? I'm not satisfied that no-excuse mail-in ballots are, are fair, are accurate, or I think that it leads to opportunities of harvesting and influencing that just doesn't lead to fair elections. So I encourage this board to fully investigate and respond to Elizabeth Preate-Havy's-
Mr. Kristovich, your time is-
-testimony. Thank you very much for your time, and could I-
Thank you for being a judge of elections, Mr. Kristovich.
That concludes our public comment.
Okay. As a result of Commissioner Gail's candidacy for governor, and that he will be on the ballot in the 2022 election cycle, we have to reorganize the minutes. I will make a motion to approve the October 28th, November 22nd, and November 29th, 2021 minutes of the Montgomery County Election Board. Is there a second? Is there any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Is there any negative votes? Minutes are approved. As I was saying, Commissioner Gail will not be serving on the election board due to his candidacy. The Honorable Kelly C. Wall has been appointed to fill the vacancy. And due to Commissioner Gail's candidacy, the vice chair position is now vacant, and I will make a nomination for Dr. Arkush to fill the vice chair vacancy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All right. Is there any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? You're not going to vote. We'll move some taxes. Next agenda item, appointment of delivery support personnel for the 2022 election cycle. Ms. Sawyer.
Good morning, election board. The Pennsylvania Election Code gives the board the authority to delegate their responsibilities to representatives authorized to act on their behalf. You have been provided a document titled 2022 Election Cycle Delivery Support Personnel, and I am requesting the board vote to approve the people named on that list to serve as delivery personnel for election-related materials for the 2022 election cycle.
Okay, I will make a motion to appoint the individual so-named in the attached document, 2022 Election Cycle Delivery Support Personnel, to assist in the delivery of election materials to election officials. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Arkush. Is there any board comment? Hearing none?
Question?
None. Is there any board comment? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Authorization of changes to polling locations. Ms. Sawyer.
I am also here to request authorization for the relocation of 10 polling locations for the 2022 primary election to take place on May 17th, 2022. The Board of Elections has given the authority by the Election Code to relocate polling places as they see fit, and today I'm seeking approval of the board to relocate 10 polling places. These locations are attached to the agenda on a sheet titled April 7th, Polling Place Relocations, and the relocations are as follows. Abington 14-2, currently at the Roslin Firehouse, moving to Roslin Elementary School. The firehouse is under construction. Cheltenham 3-1, currently at Wincoote Elementary School, moving back to All Hallows Church. This is where it was prior to the pandemic. Would like to ease the burden on the elementary school. Cheltenham 5-1, currently at Gratz College, moving to the Lamont Community Center. Gratz College does not have space available for us for the primary. Lower Gwinnett 1-1, currently at the Gwinnett Mercy University East Campus, would like to move it to the Church of the Messiah. The East Campus is no longer part of the college. We were unable to secure space in that facility, and therefore moved it to the, would like to move it to the Church of the Messiah. Lower Marion 7-2 and 7-3, moving to Temple Beth Hillel, or currently at Temple Beth Hillel Beth Elsinog, moving back, moving to Penwin Elementary School due to some scheduling conflicts at the synagogue. Upper Marion Candlebrook 2, moving from Upper Marion High School to Candlebrook Elementary because the high school is slated for demolition. Upper Marion Gulf 2, currently at the Temple Beth Akim's Synagogue, moving to Gulf Elementary School. This is just a, a larger space at the elementary school, better suited to host two precincts than the synagogue. And moving, finally moving, Upper Moreland 6-1 and 6-2, from Upper Moreland High School to the Willow Grove YMCA. We are requesting this move because the, the building that Upper Moreland 3-1 and 3-2 have been in, in the 2021, for the 2021 primary, was no longer available. There weren't any other suitable buildings in those two precincts, and the Election Code says that we can only move outside of the precinct if we move to an adjacent precinct. So that made us move 3-1 and 3-2 to the high school. Keeping 6-1 and 6-2 there means that seven precincts are voting at the high school. Given the anticipated voter turnout for the 2022 cycle, we don't feel that Upper Moreland High School can host seven precincts. We did also receive some resident feedback on Election Day that it was very confusing in the gym to know which poll books to sign in at and which machine to put your ballot into. We have worked with the director at the YMCA, who has been extremely accommodating. He has assured us that we will have the entire gym space on Election Day. This also means that other activities that would normally have to take place outside in the weather can take place inside. So all around, just a fantastic location for a polling place outside of the logistical change.
All right, I will make a motion to approve the relocation of the 10 polling places named on the attached document titled April 7th, 2022, Polling Place Relocations, beginning with the May 17th, 2022, primary election, and continuing for all elections going forward. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Arkush. Is there any board comment?
So, Ms. here, just make sure I understand this correctly. So you needed to move two precincts into the gym in Upper Moreland, or into the high school in Upper Moreland?
Correct.
Which put then a total of seven precincts there?
Correct. And we did that for the 2021 general election, which had a much lower turnout than what we were anticipating for this entire election cycle.
And it was too, and it was-
Correct. It is, when we have multiple precincts in a, in a polling location, it can be confusing to voters as to which table to check in at.
And what was the reason for that original move?
The location that 3-1 and 3-2 were in could no longer accommodate on Election Day. So 3-1 and 3-2 did not have a polling location. We could not just simply move them to the YMCA because that's skipped, it's not an adjacent precinct.
And both parties have been-
Correct, yes. Both parties have been consulted and informed, and proper notice was posted at all locations.
Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Are there any closing board comments? All right, I'll announce our next meeting will be April 21st, 2022, immediately following the Board of Commissioners meeting, and I'll take a motion to adjourn the April 7th, 2022, meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Elections.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Arkush. Is there a second?
There's a second.
A second by Judge Wall. Any board comment? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you.